Recording in progress.
Thank you, Blue. Okay, it is now 6:30 and I will call to order the meeting of the Lewis Planning Commission for February 15th. Let me first say, we have two members on Zoom, Melanie and Jackie, and I've been assured that Zoom is working this time. So if you can give me a thumbs up that you hear me, fantastic, okay? We have present Commissioner Heffernan, Commissioner Innes, and I should mention that Commissioner Jensen has resigned from the Planning Commission and we thank him for his service. The pressures and time he had from his work and the travel involved was causing conflicts. Commissioner Ewalds is here in person, Commissioner Marasco. I want to begin with just a couple announcements. There are two things that recently came out from the UD Institute of Public Administration. The first is an in-person session on advanced land use law. And I think some people, I know I've taken the non-advanced session of this. So it's a great opportunity to learn more and I think if you've taken the first session, this will build on that session. That's taking place on March 3rd. There is a cost to it, but if you email Janelle and express your interest, we can cover the...
Yep, the cost is $55. If you're interested, just let me know. Melanie expressed interest. She has been registered. This one is actually in-person up in Kent County and there are light refreshments included with this one, it said.
Yes.
So if you're interested, just let me know and we'll get you registered.
Do you have to take the registration?
No. No.
And it's Friday, March 3rd, from 9:00 AM to noon in Kent County. It's at the Kent County, did you say Levy Court?
Levy Court.
Okay. And then the second one is from the Institute for Public Administration at UD and it is a Delaware Public Service Professional Networking Session that's going to be up in Newark on Tuesday, March 28th, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. I didn't see whether there are refreshments or not, but...
It's a cash bar, I believe.
A cash bar, okay.
I was gonna say it's 5:00 to 7:00, it must be.
But they do say there'll be networking announcements, icebreakers, and a raffle. So they're really trying to entice us to show up.
Nancy?
Yes?
Is there any cake at the end of this meeting?
I'm sorry, there is no cake at the end of this meeting. As I mentioned to the members, the commissioners, once you hit 10 years, we will again have cake, okay?
Chocolate cake is worth the cake.
Unfinished business. I have to say, this is becoming a thorn in my side and I think we need to escalate this to get an answer. Janelle, this is a B1 on the Agenda Discussion and Possible Recommendation to Mayor and City Council Regarding An Ordinance To Require Archaeological Review For New Developments.
So again, I've reached out. This time I did not receive comments back, but we are going to other people in the agency to get assistance.
Excuse me, may I make a suggestion? And this is not a rehearsed suggestion, so I'm creating a spot here. Is it possible that other states, I'm thinking in Virginia because of the rich history of Virginia, that they might be able to offer some assistance to be able to get this process started?
I think one of the things we were looking at, and this is where Virginia may not be a help, is because the licensing and registration of the qualifications of an archaeologist is by state and we were trying to make sure we were identifying the right set of qualifications that someone in the state of Delaware would need to have.
And I can appreciate that, but it was my understanding that the Delaware Archaeological Group, whatever it's called, was basically a hobby club and not a professional association. But that was my understanding and...
But I think there are other, well, we should find out from them what the state accepts as qualifications, I think. Good point. There may be something we could get from Virginia or Maryland.
And I would also suggest Pennsylvania because that's a common issue in the Philadelphia area.
One of the first things I did was look at what other states had for rules and regulations. So I did do that and then I know the state had offered to provide some specific assistance and that's what we're waiting on.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to new business and a presentation and discussion regarding affordable housing. And before we get into that, I just wanted to give people a little background on kind of how we got here. And there should be some slides that are titled Housing Discussion. And if we go to that and go to the first page, we had been involved in discussions with Mayor and some members of City Council where we found out that both groups were interested in this topic. And we got together to try to identify some experts and people in the area and have met with them and heard from them. And in a short while, we'll be introducing Karen, who will be giving us a presentation on this and she's fabulous, so stay tuned. It will be a good one. But we came at this for several reasons. First of all, in the comprehensive plan that we've just done a refresh of, in the original comprehensive plan, we identified affordable housing in Lewis as a priority and an issue. And when we did the refresh, we again identified that Mayor and City Council in their list of actions to focus on also has affordable housing listed as a priority. Just as background, in terms of what we've done related to affordable housing in recent history, Dutchman's Harvest, if you drive down, drive into Lewis, you'll see that it's under construction and that is workers' housing. And the Donovan Smith Mobile Home Park Annexation also would fall into this category of affordable housing. The lack of it in Lewis is, I think, well-known by everyone and certainly if you speak to anyone at BB Hospital or any of the places that's looking to hire people, it's very hard to recruit and get people because the commuting distance and the time involved, especially in summer, is very challenging for folks. We have several challenges, though. We've got a lack of land, a lack of funding. We have a lot of unanswered questions and we really haven't had much recent public engagement on this question. If we go to the next slide, when we went over the comprehensive plan and the five-year update to it, at our workshop, we had several questions concerning affordable housing and I just wanted to relay what feedback we got from those. In response to the question, "What's missing?", we received 19 comments on housing concepts and two of the areas that received a lot of expert attention were limitations on having accessory dwelling units and options for housing set-asides. Now, we had several people, when we asked the actual question on, "Should we allow accessory dwelling units", it's the first bar chart to the left in this table. The group was fairly split and we had lots of, we had six, you know, some people also saying they just weren't sure. And for those who indicated read on this, they said it would really depend on what other conditions there were around accessory dwelling units. With the most common concern being, are these just going to be more short-term Airbnbs or are we actually providing housing for people who come to Lewis to work and support our economy and support taking care of us if we get sick and support teaching our children, et cetera, as well as serving the wonderful meals we get here in Lewis? Now, many people mentioned housing set-asides and some gave specific examples of other jurisdictions where they've put in place a set-aside into a land trust and had contributions to these from new developments that are being reproduced. And the bar chart on the far right shows strong support for requiring new developments to contribute to affordable housing and affordable housing set aside. So coming out of the five-year plan update, we had a lot of discussion on this. We brought together a group that looked at where we could draw upon expertise and what potential next steps would be. And that is how we got in touch with Karen Horton, who is from the Delaware State Housing Authority, the Policy and Planning Division. And she's going to give us a presentation today on affordable housing with a special emphasis on accessory dwelling units. Because as we looked at the lack of land here, the ability to provide some accessory dwelling units that could provide housing for workers seemed to be a more immediate solution than many others. So let me turn it over to Karen, but before I do so, I need to give a shout-out to Bob Heffernan, who really took this in hand to kind of identify people and bring them together for these meetings. And members of the Planning Commission have all received a copy of this presentation on accessory dwelling units that we're posting, as well as the, let me get the title correct on this, the Housing and Homelessness in Delaware 2022 Report, which provides a lot of data and information on this issue too. So let me now turn it over to Karen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Blue, can you bring up the next set of slides, the accessory dwelling units presentation?
Thank you. In the meantime...
And as we go through this, though, can I ask the members of the commissioners who are on Zoom, if you have a question during this, it's easy for me to see people in the room who have questions, but if you could use the Zoom, raise your hand. And if Blue could let me know if there's been a hand raised by someone, that would be helpful.
There we go. Thank you. And thank you Chairperson Stacy and members of the Planning Commission for inviting me here tonight to talk about accessory dwelling units. I'm Karen Horton and I'm a Principal Planner with the Delaware State Housing Authority. For those not familiar with Delaware State Housing Authority or DSHA, we are a quasi-public state agency and what that means is we report to both the Governor and an independent council on housing. And our core services fall into the broad categories of homeownership and rental and we have a variety of specialized programs in response to that. And we do this through several roles. We are the state's housing finance agency, the Public Housing Authority for Canton, Sussex, outside of Dover. We are also the state's housing development agency administering both the State Housing Development Fund and our allocation of tax credits through the Longham Housing Tax Credit Program. And we're also a planning and community development agency, which means we administer community development block grant, a lot of those HUD funds. So in summary, DSHA addresses to some degree the full spectrum of housing challenges facing Delaware residents. And we welcome opportunities because we know that partnerships are needed and nobody can address housing individually, that we all need to help each other. So we welcome opportunities to work with local jurisdictions, to explore strategies, resources needed to promote diverse housing types and just like what we're doing tonight with the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So, thank you.
Can you pull the microphone closer to you because I think for the folks who aren't here?
Okay. Sorry about that. And what I'll do is it's really a brief summary. I don't, you can go into the weeds with this and I did a few times and I pulled myself back out. And there's a few slides where I went into the weeds, but anyway, but in general, go over what accessory dwelling units are, why are they so popular across the country, what are the benefits, what are some of the things that are discouraging them and how are they playing out in Delaware right now? And how can we encourage ADUs and what are some best practices? And then answer any questions. Next slide, please. So an ADU essentially is a small secondary dwelling on the same lot as a primary residential dwelling unit. And they come in different varieties. They can be created inside, added to, or detached from the primary unit. It's important to note that they are a separate self-contained living quarter. Typically have a separate entrance in the house and they have a separate kitchen, separate bathroom, sleeping area, all the things you need to live. And they're often done through construction or conversion of an attic, a basement, or garage. And one of the reasons why they're so popular and that they're a great way to provide additional housing opportunities is that they can be created in the existing housing stock. So for like communities that are already built out, and they have minimal visual impact because typically they're within the unit or they're back behind or there's some kind of design guideline. Next slide, please. So like I said, they're really a popular option nationwide. Municipalities are relaxing their restrictions and several states, and I've counted about 10, have been encouraging municipalities to create accessory dwelling units. And this is because they are really seen as a very effective way to increase housing supply and diversity, again, without changing the physical character of a neighborhood. It helps cost-burdened homeowners generate income, who are often elderly and want to age in their communities while maintaining some sense of privacy, again, the separate living quarters. They offer a multi-generational option and they just really kind of hit a lot of, they're not the silver bullet, they're not the one-size-fits-all, but they are a key tool that can be used as part of a more broader comprehensive strategy. And when you see the demographic changes that are going on, I hope that there might be some, oh, I see why. I mean, that's what I do. So, and then the next slide, please. This just gives you an idea and I have to stress that I looked at it and this is taking, if everyone could put an accessory dwelling unit in their house somehow, some way, this is what it would look like on your typical block. And as you can see, it's kind of this gentle density. It's also considered an incremental density in that you don't go down the street and then all of a sudden you see this big development excavation area and then four months later you have 40 new units. You know, it's like, well, somebody might add a garage apartment over there and somebody four blocks down may add something over there. So it's incremental and gentle over time, responsive to that homeowner's needs. Next slide, please. So why are they so popular? And a growing affordable housing crisis, which I'm sure everybody has heard, and changing demographics have spurred an interest in ADUs. Accessing housing has become difficult for more and more of Delaware's population. According to Housing Alliance Delaware's Housing and Homelessness in Delaware 2022 Report, from 2020 to 2022, rents increased so quickly, and I believe this, that the federally calculated fair market rent was not able to keep up. And when I see them, I'm like, they definitely did not keep up. But what is available, I think, does make a very good case. According to the Housing Alliance Delaware, there is a shortage of 18,148 rental units affordable to extremely low-income renters in Delaware. And this is due to being 26,000, there's a total of 26,000 of them, 400, but there's only 8,200 affordable units available. So for every 3.2 ELI households, there's only one unit available. Also, three out of four ELI renter households are severely cost-burdened, meaning that they're paying over half of their income on housing expenses. And then in this pie chart, you can see, you know, who are ELI? They are 38% are in the labor force, 25% are seniors, 16% are living with a disability, 6% are students, and 3% are single adult caregivers. And these households must sacrifice other essential things such as healthcare, food, clothing, just to keep a roof over their head. And I've realized that the accessory dwelling unit, we're not, at least not in this initial, you know, exploration, addressing the extremely low income. I'm just giving like a broad overview of some of the challenges that are being faced in Sussex County. And another reason why that they are becoming more popular, next slide, please, is because of the shortage of housing, you have more people competing for those same units. And that is one of the reasons, one of several, why the rents are going up so quickly. And this is increasing the number of households who are cost-burdened, where they pay at least 30% of their income on housing expenses. So for example, homeowners shows that 23% of all homeowners are burdened by housing costs and 9% are severely cost-burdened, paying over 50% of their income on housing expenses. And 23% of renters, of homeowners aged 65 and over are cost-burdened. Renters, 51% of all renters are cost-burdened, and this is regardless of the income range. 25% are severely cost-burdened and 45% of renters aged 65 and over are cost-burdened. What I did, and I did not have the time, maybe I, you know what, I may have, no, I did not. But I was looking at the trend of cost-burdened and it was really interesting to see how like 20 years ago, it was just this small amount and it's like every year, there's a bigger percentage of the population that's getting more and more cost-burdened. And I just found that to be very interesting, concerning, but definitely of note.
May I interrupt and ask a question? These percentages that you put on this page seven, is this applicable to the state of Delaware or is this nationwide?
The housing crisis and the similar dynamics are playing out nationwide, but this right here is applicable, this is applicable to Sussex County.
This is Sussex County? Thank you.
Karen, you have another question on that, was a review. Did you say that 30, the percentage of income changes as they get, as someone ages? Did you meant to say that? No. I thought you said something about that, that when they're over 65, 30% of their income is, rather than 50% of income.
Well, you've got 23% of homeowners aged 65 and over are cost-burdened.
That's why I was asking whether the cost-burden dynamic change is still, is 50% more than their income is, makes them cost-burdened, is that...
No, in this case, is that of homeowners aged 65 and over, 23%, and I'm talking homeowners, this first part, 23% are cost-burdened where they're paying over 30% of their income toward housing expenses. So just to keep a roof over their head, because they say to keep your home affordable, you should not have to pay more than 30% of your income. And so they're paying more than 30% to keep a roof over their head.
So those monthly costs would include, for example, utilities, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and repairs to the structure as well?
Not calculated into that particular one, but utilities, taxes, and insurance. Or, and then in case of renters, it would be like utilities primarily, you know.
Is that 30% of gross or net?
Very good question. I think it is gross, but I will find out.
I'm pretty sure it's gross.
Okay.
It's gross.
Gross or net? Thank you.
So that would be gross also for the age piece of 65 and over?
So I'm just gonna, I keep getting texts from people who are listening. If you're gonna speak, if everybody could just find a mic that's close to them and if they're not, just borrow one, if you don't mind. Thank you.
No, no, that's fine. Next, next slide, please. So, I'm sorry. The next piece that I wanted to show is that it's really fascinating how the household composition has changed over time. And if you look at this chart and you'll see that in 1960, 44% of all households were your married couple, two kids, your traditional, your traditional family. Here, fast forward and up to 2021, in Delaware, and this is typical, again, a lot of what Delaware, I like to do the national when we have it available, but also bring it in for landing in Dover and Sussex or Kent or Newcastle, wherever we're at. But you can see here, in Delaware in 2021, that has been reduced to 15% of all households or your traditional households. And in Sussex, it's actually 11%. And then if you look at the single person, which to me is amazing and it's even more pronounced in Newcastle County, it's one out of three. Can you imagine, one out of three households in Newcastle, I think it's, for sure it's Newcastle, is a single person, you know, in Sussex, it's one out of four. So that kind of gives you an idea and you can also see that when you look at other families or unrelated persons, your other families are your multi-generational households and then your unrelated roommates are essentially your unrelated roommates, you know, which makes sense if you're a single person and you're trying to afford a place to live, you know. So that just kind of gives you an idea of how the household composition is changing. And also it's important to note that in the 1960s, that zoning really came on the horizon where we, it was that single-family detached separation of uses, you know. So, and I just wanted to share that, that the whole reason why that type of housing was created is really not serving that purpose anymore. Like it was responding to the market, you know, it was doing what it was supposed to do in 1960. But when you look at it, the household composition, and all you gotta do, I look at my neighborhood, I'm like, on my little street, yep, all of us, you know, are like, we're multi-generational or we have someone who's over 65 or, you know, so it's, I find that fascinating. So then the next slide, please.
I had a question on this one. I was wondering if there was any age demographic? Because, you know, when we're looking at single people, are we talking about, you know, just people who are widows, widowers, or young, you know, young working people? And I think that's a distinction here.
You know, I don't, I got that from the census, and I don't have the answer to that. They do have it broken out by whether or not it's, if the, if the, for example, the single households are over or under sixty-five. But that really i- is about it.
Right.
And I'm not even gonna try to guess what it was, I mean, I can get in trouble. No worries. But for the next slide, this does talk about the presence of children and elderly. And I really found this fascinating, and I, I really kind of panicked last night because I thought, this cannot be accurate, you know, I've always heard twenty-five percent, we're gonna eventually get to thirty percent of our population, and then I'm like, oh, it, it's like, oh, it's population, not households. And that's a huge difference, you know, especially when you're talking about smaller households. But when you look at Delaware, and this is twenty twenty-one, American Community Survey, five-year, it's a little bit better of a survey. And so this is, the percent of households with one or more people who are under age eighteen, and they can be over or un, they can be in multiple categories here, but it just kind of, this is out of just all households. But anyway, under eighteen, twenty-eight percent of households in Delaware have someone who's under eighteen, twenty-two in Sussex. In regards to over sixty, in Delaware, forty-five percent had someone over sixty, one person. And in Sussex, it was sixty percent. And I just was a little floored by that, and I had to double-check a lot of different sources, just to make sure I had that right. And then over sixty-five, it's thirty-four percent, has, thirty-four percent of all households has at least one person who is age sixty-five or over. And in Sussex, it's like fifty percent. And so I shared that only because that speaks to the need to plan and include them in the planning process and make sure, I know, one of the biggest things you hear is the desire to age in place in your community, you know. And so that's why I wanted to highlight those.
I have a question, please.
Certainly.
When you describe the, the child with the elderly in this chart, in this graphic, is it assumed that that child is related to the elderly person?
No, think of them as each a separate category, meaning they could be that same child, could be in a household that doesn't have anyone aged sixty or sixty-five, or it could. That's why these percentages do not add up. It's just out of, for example, out of all households, what percent of all households have at least one person who is aged eighteen or under?
So this is supporting this statement that there's multi-generational? Is that what you're, I don't, I'm trying to get the value of this stuff.
Yeah, sure, just that Sussex County has an abundance of households that contain at least one person who is over sixty or sixty-five. And I think that's important to point out for planning purposes.
Thank you.
Sure thing. The next slide, this is what I also find very interesting, because this is your housing, going back to that chart of household composition, you know, that back in the sixties, we started really zoning for single-family detached, that met the need, you know. And here we are, coming up to twenty twenty-one, and what do we see? And if you look carefully, what this is showing is trends from two thousand, two thousand and ten, two thousand and ten. And the detached one on your far left is showing that it's actually increasing, even though population, you know, people are experiencing more increased cost burden, and that they are, household composition is changing dramatically. Also, there, there is very few of this, of anything else in here. I did find it interesting that of what there was, everything except for townhomes and duplexes, it either stayed the same or declined as a percentage. So I kind of, I look at it, go ahead.
And the, these are national figures, is that right?
No, this is Sussex County.
Oh, this is Sussex County?
And you know what, I need to do a better job labeling, I am really sorry about that. I need to do a better job labeling my, yeah, this is, this is all Sussex, I'm sorry about that.
I have another question on this one, their chart, where it says twenty-plus units. Is that units in a building in a structure, or is that twenty units in a complex, for example?
That is a building that has at least twenty units.
Right, right, and that model, okay. Thank you.
Sure thing, sure.
I think what's also interesting when you look at this is the mobile homes, which is, you know, a loss of mobile homes clearly is a loss of, of lower-income housing. So what is happening, are they being torn down for, for, to create single-family home communities?
Not necessarily, I would, well, I'll let her explain, statistically, I would think not, but go ahead.
A lot of them are being, just from what I see coming through plus, is that a lot of them are mobile home parks that do have residents, and they come through, and as long as they're given proper notification under the manufactured housing act, that they can do that. But the issue is, is that once they have bought that unit, that manufactured home, that mobile home, they own it, you know, but they cannot, Delaware mobile home parks do not allow anything but a new unit, so they have no place to put it when they're done, unless they go out and buy a lot. But I do believe that it is market pressures to moving to a different type of unit is what has caused that. So, and, but I, I do find it interesting, this, just this single-family detached, that it keeps going up. And you sound like you want to say.
The townhomes.
Oh, okay, that's okay. I was gonna say, I welcome you. All right, so next, I just wanted to talk about some benefits of accessory dwelling units. I have been advocating for these for so long, because I have an aging mom. And she lives with us, and we have, we're lucky because we have a house where we're able to modify it enough where she calls it her own quarter, her own wing. But I can see so desperately how people need that, because my mother would also drive me nuts, and we would drive her nuts. You know what I mean? So fortunately, she has enough of her own space, but I could see that train coming about twenty years ago. And so I've been a really big proponent for these. But the money benefits for the homeowner that lives there is that they provide a passive income for house-rich, cash-four, or cost-burdened homeowners. You know, this particularly is conducive for those who wish to age in place. You know, they, they have this wonderful house, they're connected to the community, they don't want to go anywhere. But, you know, you have expenses, and you have maintenance, and you just, it's like too much house and every, all the expenses that go with it. And for example, if you were able to get a, you know, somebody out of school, or someone who's working at BB or something like that, a young professional, you also get a second set of eyes on your property, not to mention companionship. There's a lot of secondary benefits they talk, other than just the housing unit. It's the additional affordable unit that's directly in response to that demographic trend, single millennials, you know, and at the same time, that cash-burdened, or house-burdened elderly household, or just elder, or any homeowner who's cost-burdened, that just needs some passive income, and when you're over sixty-five, and if you're needing income, passive income is a good thing. And it helps, and there is this chart I wanted to include, but it shows how it serves as life cycle housing. You know, where it begins with the parents and the two kids, and then as the kids go out, the kids go off, get married, then they come back, they take over the house, and then mom or dad go to the accessory unit, and it's really, it serves a lot of.
Recycling program.
Yes, yes. And also, like, with us, helps families manage changing lifestyles, you know, it's flexible, you know, like, we're definitely taking care of my mom now in caretaking situations. Also, and then the next slide, is community benefits. This really is so true, when you think about, like, a lot of this new single-family detached housing is, that is not good for the environment, it is not good for traffic, it is not good for, it exacerbates the already existing housing crisis, when we're not, you know, developing housing options that are responsive to the housing demand. But instead, like, the accessory dwelling unit, you optimize your existing infrastructure, meaning you don't have to purchase any additional land, you don't have to put out new utilities or road out to serve it. It provides equity and affordability, meaning it allows people who live, work in that area, or, you know, would be able to have access to the, like, this is some of the highest-performing schools in the state, you know, and to be able to allow other families that might not otherwise be able to afford to live here, to be able to live in a community where their family can thrive. And that's another thing I need to add, is that most ADUs, well, in fact, they all are, I mean, the biggest one is two, is a two-bedroom, but typically their studios are one-bedroom, so they are small households. But that individual, that couple that's living there, it does give them access to amenities and resources that is provided in that, you know, rich environment, that area of opportunity.
I have a question.
Sure thing.
So for the, for these units, is it typical in Delaware that they have their own address, their own utilities, so they can be monitored? I mean, not, I'm not thinking of, you know, your mother being out there, you wouldn't give her a bill, okay, I get that part. But if this is really gonna be sustainable, they need to stand on their own, what's your experience in seeing that?
Most programs do have a separate utility, you can have it on the same utility line, but most that I have seen have had a separate utility. And with that, I, I'm sure I don't know the address, but it would make sense that they would have a separate address as well. But I will look into that.
Yeah, and I have a similar, like, Karen, you mentioned, love impact on, in fact, how they would, most likely have their own meter, and you'd have to run stubs to those.
Yeah, it's easy, not, not a problem. But there's an expense associated with that.
Oh, yeah.
Expect, you know, extending any kind of utility beyond where presently terminated.
That, that would be the cost of, of construction, though, as, as the owner, that would fall upon them, correct? So it wouldn't be a city issue.
The owner would, would, some, the homeowner itself would have to afford the, the construction. I guess they could pass it on to the tenant or whatever.
And, and we do have a precedent in the city, I'm looking at Tim and laughing, of the address that is like fifteen and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah, that will, that will not happen ever again, because, again, there's addressing processes in place.
No, you'd probably renumber everybody on the street.
Yeah, it would be like an A and a B, and we do have those throughout the city, where it's an A and a B, so you had, you do have that. And a lot of, like, we do currently now have a lot of, like, detached garages that already have a toilet and a sink in them, so there's usually some type of utility, water and sewer already running to them, so, you know.
Karen, have you seen, one of the things you mentioned here is improving equity, and obviously it's potentially two-way, or that can happen, or even a four-door house by renting to someone, but have you seen situations where, because we are obviously trying to subdivide these yards, but have you seen situations where there's equity in the, sort of land lease essentially, where the tenant can buy into the ADU and then potentially sell, have you seen those?
No, I have not, I have not seen that, because it's typically all part of that one lot, and it belongs to the homeowner. If anything, the resale value for the homeowner, once they have created that ADU, is really quite significant, which is a good and a bad, meaning like you're trying to create more affordable housing options. But the homeowner that gets that done, you know, that their resale value has been, the research has shown quite significant and much more valuable than what they paid to get that put in in the first.
And I had a follow-on question in regards to tenant situations where, like, you have an internal ADU, because one of the things you mentioned here is safety. Do the tenant rules in terms of renter, renting, change when you have that situation, what makes it easier potentially to get rid, you know, to get rid of a unruly or undesirable tenant? If you're in, yeah, if they're in that situation where, yeah, you, you do it for safety, but you realize, oh, I'm actually in a unsafe situation.
Well, it would depend on, for example, I'm sure you'll have, like, if this is something interesting, you'd have a permitting process, you know, and it's always recommended. If the landlord does not, they're like, oh, I feel comfortable with this, you know, they start off with a lease, and then they decide, oh, I'm gonna let that trail out, they've been making great payments, I trust them, you know. Then you have a situation. But as long as you have your lease spelled out, and it's in there, it's the same thing as the landlord-tenant code. And you can get out of it early if you feel like you're in an unsafe situation. And that's why screening is important, you know. But there is, there is a way, way to get out of it, it's just more of the notification process. And one good thing is that since it is a separate entrance, you know, that, that is, you're not having to worry about them being in your physical space.
Because that is, Allison, I don't know if you're ready, I will put you on the spot, and there's also a house bill that was introduced this year to make it, again, more difficult to get rid of an undesirable tenant. So just that, something we want to just be mindful as well, in situations like that.
Mm-hmm. Next slide, please. And this is, okay. A lot of the roles that we're seeing, and what is interesting is throughout the western part of the United States, ADUs are quite prolific. I mean, they have already time-tested them, fine-tuned them, I mean, they're a well-oiled machine now. Now they're coming back around to the eastern part of the country. And also, we have, we have had Massachusetts and Maine, New Jersey, now we have Vermont. Maryland is looking at it and exploring it. But all the main northeast states are now really have these in place, and really encouraging local jurisdictions to do some type of ADU, just because they do tick a lot boxes. And again, it goes back to the design of the program and making sure it fits the community's needs. But some of the things they said, because what would, what happened is, when they started getting adopted, they found certain requirements just kind of, you couldn't get it going, you know what I mean? Like, it just wasn't creating any units. And they said that ADU-specific regulations that do not apply to the primary dwelling. And for example, this one, I think what they're saying, like, the owner occupancy requirement, I think, actually, I think that's normal, but I wonder if they're talking about the ADU itself, which that would not make sense. But I know it's definitely for, only for an emergency, like, a lot of ADUs are permitted when they've shown it to be, like, oh, you have to show you're in a case of emergency. Because there's so much, there's a lot of, there is expense, and there is a process you have to go through. You know, homeowners don't want, they're not developers, you know what I mean? They just want to create this additional unit, and if they don't feel comfortable with the process, they're just not gonna go through with it. Complex design compatibility and approval steps, not saying, definitely you want compatibility and design standards, but if they get overly complex, like your Williamsburg-type standards, that might get difficult. Off-street parking requirements beyond those required for primary dwelling. Um, off-street parking requirements beyond those required for primary dwelling units, uh, restrictions that limit ADUs to certain geographic areas or particular categories or to large lots, um, that those also can be problems. Also, that brings in, for example, if a more smaller-sized house, maybe on a quarter-acre lot, is able to make it work, and just saying that modest-sized house, you may have a more modest-income person, but if you had a lot-size requirement that said you have to have a half-acre or a third-acre in order to even consider it, here it is, you're, it's kind of like restricting an entire portion of the population from being able to access all the benefits that the program provides. So, um, caps on square footage, um, that make it easy to add large homes, but not small homes, meaning small ADUs. Um, and then that goes back to just that equity. Now, in Delaware, right now, there's, I have not found any where they are permitted by right unless they're grandfathered. Um, where legal, it's currently limited only to relatives for emergency situations, which, again, that emergency situation, I've seen, I've watched a couple go through a public review process in the name of emergency. And the last I checked, I had tracked it for over six months, and, um, they were still in that whole process. Um, and when you limit to relatives, again, just doing, um, your, your, um, screening, you know, that, that's always important to do. Um, that, you really do want to have them open to as much of the population as possible.
What would be the type of emergency situation that would, I mean, is this, someone can't use the stairs and so they want to be able to be in their, you know, in a garage that's on the same level, or what, what would it be?
It would be something like that.
Or, I've dealt with examples of, um, you know, a fire of a home, so a family member needs to move back or somebody is sick, um, medical situations, um, where they need to be taken care of, so, but, you know, it's like, you know, I, I want my parents to live with me, but maybe not that close, but they need, but they can't be on their own at this point. So those types of situations is, and typically, like, sometimes it's, it's a medical situation, which really becomes the emergency.
Um, also, many are considered more gas cottages and they don't permit kitchens, or the minimum lot sizes are too large. And so the general recommendation, just do some type of, um, permitted use or administrative review, decide your criteria upfront. You know what you want, what you don't want, get all those pieces figured out. And then once the, if folks come through and they meet all that criteria, then it would be beneficial in terms of really getting homeowners, because that's the next big challenge, is making homeowners aware of it and getting comfortable with the process. Um, that, just finding a pro, defining that criteria and then putting it so that it can be done through an administrative process, simplify the building permit process, reduce wave-impact fees, remove restrictions limiting ADUs, and there were some examples mentioned in that prior slide, and realistic parking rules. Um, Connecticut, I thought it'd do one state and one, uh, local. Connecticut in twenty-twenty-one enacted state-level legislation, and they, they've done this all over the West, but permit ADUs as of right without special permit or hearing. Allow both attached and detached ADUs, um, allow ADUs up to one thousand and thirty percent of main dwelling, not set age requirement, which I agree anyway, for any type of housing proposal. Um, I sit in a monthly plus review, so I, that's my little pet peeve. Or parking requirements greater than one space per ADU, not require new or separate utility other than the principal dwelling. And we'll see, I actually would say that would be okay, because that's quite typical. But anyway, that is, uh, that is a, um, pretty well-recognized program right now.
Karen, in, in, uh, I mean, I'm familiar with these in the West, but in the Connecticut one, for example, are these all for existing buildings, you know, barns, cottages, or, because, I mean, I, I feel like, I know, like, in rural communities, where I'm from, this was a very good use of barns and sheds. Very good use. It, it did all the benefits you said, but when people came forward and said, I want to build one of these, it changed the public communication, discussion. What's been your experience?
Um. But thieves are, not. But in Connecticut, what they're saying here is any place where a single-family home is allowed by right is where they're allowing them by right.
Okay, so whether it's new construction or a retrofit.
Mm-hmm, yep. Um, and Alexandria, I thought this was pretty good. I like this one. Um, it's, it does allow ADU citywide, one per property, both internal and detached, but it requires the homeowners to maintain the primary residence during the time of ADU construction. It approves it through a permit application process, prohibit short-term rentals, and the internal ADU cannot be greater than one-third of the principal. So that's kind of how you get to those, uh, smaller houses, you know, or just smaller lot sizes. Detached ADUs cannot exceed height of principal dwelling or twenty feet, whichever's less. No off-street, uh, parking spaces are required. When I was here a couple months ago, I was able to pull up real easy, you know, what they had in units up to September, and I was really excited to find out what this new updated number was. And I went in there and their whole system was down or broken, and I was like, no. So anyway, I don't know what it is, but anyway.
Is this, uh, I noticed that the link, the web link is for Arlington, but is it Arlington or is it Alexandria?
It must.
Which has this program.
Then it's gotta be Arlington. Wait a minute, I'm very confused. I'll have to look, because I was looking at Arlington for a while, but I liked Alexandria's much better in terms of I felt like it was just, it ticked a lot more, and I may have saved that link. Because Arlington and Alexandria went through updates at the exact same time, maybe six months apart. But I am really glad you pointed that out, because it's gotta be Arlington, or, because I clicked on it and it went there.
Karen, do you know the, oh, no off-street parking space required, is, do they have off-street? Do, do they have off-street parking requirements for the primary dwelling?
I don't know. I don't.
So they actually have more transit-oriented areas, so they have a lot of, um, access to buses, the metro, other places for other mode, modes of transportation to getting back and forth from work. So that's sometimes why you'll see no parking spaces required, because, um, especially if they're near, um, the transit-oriented areas.
Right, yeah, but I do want to point out, both Alexandria and Arlington, the metro service there, the rail system, is approximately forty-five years old, and that, in fact, it's not even that old, in some parts of the, the, of those two jurisdictions. So there would have been already, those homes that existed, and they were built sixty years ago, seventy-five years ago, a hundred years ago, would already have a garage, well, might have a garage, but would have had a driveway, a provision for a driveway. Already, you know, there's already an accommodation for a driveway.
I just, I just did a quick check of the link. I think the link is obviously for Arlington, but what's here is Alexandria, so. Because I, Arlington requires a parking space, so.
Arlington requires a parking space.
We require one.
Thank you.
So, and that was it.
Thank you so much, Karen. Are there questions?
How about Melanie and?
Melanie and, uh, sorry, should say, Commissioner Roser and Commissioner Matty.
Presentation. I don't have any questions right now.
Commissioner Matty, any questions?
Thanks for opening it up. I've, I've, I've also, um, got, enjoyed this presentation, and at the moment, I don't have any questions.
All right. Folks in the room. Rich.
Um, thank you. That was very, very informative. Um, my question is that, um, I think this is obviously a viable option for Lewis, because, you know, you, 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 you just look around and we're, um, and we don't have a lot of space to, uh, to build additional affordable housing units. And it is a huge problem. I was telling Nancy, uh, I went in to, for some physical therapy and the young man who was, uh, uh, working on me, I, and I asked him, I said, you know, were you able to find, uh, housing here? And he was not, and, um, he was lucky that his employer was able to give him, was able to, uh, rent him out, uh, some housing that he had. He said, otherwise, he was not gonna be able to move here. It was that bad.
Wow.
And, uh, uh, and, and he's the kind of person that you want here. You know, he's, he's a healthcare provider. And, um, so, I mean, it's just, I think it's a very critical, um, uh, problem that we have down here. But my question is, um, while, so this, this is a very, uh, practical solution for Lewis. You don't have to look too far outside of the boundary of Lewis to see that there are some open spaces um, that, that might be more amenable to, uh, to building some affordable housing. Um, so my question for you, Karen, is, o- other than ADUs, which are, you know, are, you know, which I think, I think this is something that we really need to explore in earnest here. Um, what other options do you think are, are something, other things that we ought to be looking at? And what is the state, uh, encouraging?
I think, um, that it's important that we're not talking about communities providing housing directly, that all communities should indicate and be open to opportunities when they come to provide and see how they can facilitate affordable housing. So say, say, for example, the low-income housing tax credit, and I'll give a very good example why, is that the low-income housing tax credit, if there was a smaller-scale version of it, you know, where it could fit in nicely, well-designed, fit into a block scale, this is something that the town, and I'm just saying, that there's a lot of things that can be done. Um, employee housing, I just, when I hear there's open space over there, I think we all have to take a look, we're at a point where we all have to take a piece of the pie. And the reason why is when you look at the distribution of affordable subsidized units, particularly in Sussex County, and you overlay it with school proficiency, it is really stark. For example, on the eastern half of Sussex County, you have the highest-performing schools in the state. But you also have, and this is the entire eastern side of Sussex County, from the beginning to end, is the fewest amount of any kind of affordable rental units in the state. So what happens is, the pressure then goes that they have to go to Seaford and Laurel and Delmar, and they're looking at twenty-two percent and more, you know, so then you get this mismatch, and their school proficiency rate is much, much lower. I mean, and I'm talking around twenty-five. You know, so it, that's an equity issue. And so that's why I say that, um, I think it's important to be open to a variety of different things. I think this is an excellent start. But that, just to keep exploring, and, um, I am glad to research any possible way. You know, for example, um, there are, again, like, employee, trying to encourage, uh, employers to create housing for their employees, but then, anything to mitigate and to bring down, for every unit that is created, you're meeting a demand. And, um, so, just to create wherever it is possible, and where it is possible to attach a subsidy for it, so that you can, um, help meet the need, because, for example, those ELI renters that are severely cost-burdened, I mean, those folks, you can tell they can't help it, you know what I mean? That they're caregivers, they are, they have disabilities, they, I mean, they're the elderly, and they, they need help. And, um, I just think that it's just broader, and I'm not, I'm just saying that it can be, affordable housing can take many different forms, and it can be in a scale, and it can be designed in a way, and structured in a way, that it does, for example, this particular way is, has very little, uh, visual change or visual aesthetics, or really any kind of altering of a community's character or the neighborhood character. Um, but it is a great way to provide, you know, a more affordable housing type. Again, I would say no, no Airbnb, because you want to make sure it gets to long-term. Um, but that, things like missing middle, uh, housing, like those cottage courtyards, and, um, those types that were really prolific prior to, you know, World War Two, they, to look at ways to encourage that, but also perhaps attach, um, be open to attaching subsidies to some of them, or ground leases, to make sure that they go to the people, to a more affordable, um, household or household with more, uh, lower income, if that makes sense. I'm just saying, we don't all have to say, we're gonna build a sea colony, um, with all contained. I'm just saying, each community can look at what works best for their community, what scale, you know, but I think we all just kind of have to start taking a little bit of that part.
Tia?
I have a, a couple of questions probably for you. Uh, could you take a minute and describe, uh, explain what a low-income tax credit is? And who qualifies for that, please?
Sure thing. Of course, um, our development division has tried to explain this to me many, many a time. But I can tell you that it is the largest driver of the affordable, of most. It was until this big housing crisis, until the private market got involved, but until, up till COVID, uh, the low-income housing tax credit was the largest driver of rental communities, period. And then these, uh, rental communities are for your workforce, because you had to have an income in order to afford it. So, for example, most incomes were arranged, when you look at rental housing, they're typically affordable to renter households that make less than eighty percent of the area median income. And so for these housing, these rental units, the income range was forty to sixty percent. So it's not subsidized. It's more of your, like, your resort jobs, really, you know, your resort economy. Um, so it's affordable to those households, but because of the restrictions, and there's this whole, um, selling the credits, and there's a value to the credits, and you get to do these, there's a subsidiary, there's a whole secondary market with these credits that I totally don't have the bandwidth to completely understand. I just know that they're highly desirable, that the developers are able to make the project work as a result and get those units, but they guarantee that those units go to those, uh, for example, the management company has to do all sorts of income checks to make sure that they do have the income to live there.
All right, but that would be a program that would be available for developers of stock, not for an individual homeowner who wants to build an ADU in his backyard or in his basement.
Absolutely, correct.
Okay, thank you. Next question I have is, um, when you talk about the employ, thank you, uh, about employers creating, um, making housing available for their employees, uh, and I can imagine that that's probably a taxable event for the employee. But putting that aside, my question really is about, uh, it seems to me that what we are really faced with here in this area. really faced with here in this area is the fact that many employers are not paying living wages. And if they are not paying living wages, that are somewhat bracketed to what housing costs are, and cost of food, and utilities, et cetera, that this is, you know, we're not really taking care of the problem. We're not addressing the problem, we're not challenging the employers to do, you know, what, what might be the right thing to do.
Well, I, I would say that's a key piece of it, and that might have been more the case two years ago, but the rents have raised so high in the last couple of years. I mean, we're, we're talking easily $2,000, just about anywhere in Sussex County. And I mean, that, to a certain point, yes, you really do want to trust those business owners to pay the fairest wage they can, and to ensure that they are able to access, and to make it a living wage. But there does come a point when the, the housing costs rise so much, that there's really, it's beyond that employer's ability, especially when you're talking about a resort economy, to be able to pay that kind of, where they could afford a $2,000 a month.
I think also you have to look at the, the mix of housing available. Because, you know, it, it might be a living wage if there was a one-bedroom available. But they're so few, so.
But that's a reflection of what the market is, correct? Whatever we, what the stock that we have is a reflection of the market, is driven by the market. And if that's what the market is saying is desired here, then that's what we get.
Now, I, I don't think it is necessarily driven by the market. And I say that because you see, I mean, you could see from the numbers you gave here of the number of single-family homes being built, but then you look at the number of very small households. So, you know, the fact that you could make more money by developing a very expensive property on a piece of land, even though there may be a great number of people out there looking for, for one-bedroom units, that, that need of those people isn't going to drive a developer necessarily to develop what the market is asking for. The developer would, may develop what they would make the greatest profit on, because that's, you know, that's their land, they're in business, you know.
Right.
We have a unit, or units, that are being built here, right out behind the new assisted living facility.
Right.
And I was involved a little bit in it, only with the BVW, because we're providing all the services. And they're getting a, the builder anyhow, is getting a credits, act for, I mean, financial credit.
Right.
For building. And they had to do several designs, because the cost of building versus what the original design was, wasn't working. So one of the problems is what it costs to build it, and what you can chart. And what, if, my understanding is, at least for what they're charging, and what they're able to charge, the kind of workforce housing there really are like nurses and, and your physical therapists, that kind of person. Because the, because the charge is steep enough that low-income housing, people are not going to be able to afford. The stipulations, though, are pretty strict, and you can't sell it, except for a certain percentage, and et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it's very, very controllable.
And you have to live here and work here, and
Yes, yeah.
Those kinds of things.
Yes, 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 yes. And you can't rent it. You can't, you can't get one of those and rent it.
And the Dutchman's Harvest came through, I think, I'm looking around, I think maybe, maybe less than half of the commissioners were, were here, when we, when we worked on that.
Okay, so you had a presentation.
In, in a lot of, a lot of detail. And now, you know, you see the timeframe involved, because it's, it's still just under construction, you know.
I actually have a question. Can I jump in, because it's a question
Of course.
related to this? I had a question, I wrote down some notes at the very beginning of this presentation, related to us having the premise of our affordable housing being Dutchman's Harvest under construction, and the Donovan Smith Mobile Home Park annexation. With Donovan, and then later came up about housing set-asides. So, I just had a question about Dutchman's Harvest. Is, my understanding, is it the entire complex, or is it only a percentage of units? I know that there are, that there were the tax credits that were part of that, and I know that the density was increased to make the numbers work, because I was not on the planning commission, but attended many, many meetings. But what was the final outcome? Is it a percentage of units?
It's a percentage of the units.
And what percentage is that?
It's 142 units, 40 of which are for the workforce housing that are being sold to the Milford Housing Development Corporation.
Okay, because I think that's important. I think when we look at this
But 100% of them are workforce housing.
That people are hearing workforce housing, they're thinking all 142 units are house, are, are workforce housing. And so what are we looking at? Less than a third?
I don't actually, that's true. I think it's my understanding that 100% is workforce housing, the difference is that the Milford Housing is, if you will, buying a third of them, like 40 of them, that Janelle mentioned. And that, and therefore, they will be available at a, what I would call a more, at a reduced acquisition price. That's my understanding. I think originally it was, originally, when it came through council, I thought it was, and I was not sitting on council at the time, but I believe it was the understanding that the project was going to be a mixture of, there's going to be this designated, designated or allocated workforce coming through a housing authority, and then these other ones would be market-based, of what I call market-based. And, and it's my understanding now, 100% of them are, are considered workforce housing.
Well, I, I think it becomes an issue of whether, what the market ends up being
Yeah.
when they're completed, whether that is a price that is affordable by the typical, you know, work worker here.
Sure, of course.
And so, the, the other 40 have protections, so that they should remain accessible to people who are working, but not receiving the housing.
Is that right, Janelle?
Yes.
And I know, I could, I could go way off the deep end on this particular topic, because I'm passionate about it. So I won't try to, I'll try not to be too bad. But there was an article that I'm happy to send around to everyone in the Washington Post, where you could analyze zip code by zip code. And 42% of homes purchased in the 19958 zip code were cash bought.
Yeah.
And
Right.
People who are nurses or teachers, they cannot, they can't compete with, with cash buyers who have, you know, divested their incomes elsewhere, come here and are looking to purchase maybe a final home and retire.
Exactly.
Our workers cannot compete with this.
Right.
And that's what the free market has done to Sussex County.
Okay, let, let's just
Get back in.
The reason we asked, Nancy and I have been to a couple of other meetings with Janelle and, and about housing. And let's just say it's a crisis in Sussex County. And one of the things, we don't have a lot of land here, and we do have very unaffordable housing. So, one of the things that Lewis thought it could do, or city council thought it could do, and Nancy and I as a, was accessible dwelling units. And so that's why we sort of got to this. Now, the city council has a bigger problem, because they've signed on to a comprehensive plan that says, go for it. But this is something that might be doable here in Lewis in the, in our timeframe. So that's why we invited Karen to sort of bring us all up to speed on what these are, and what people are doing elsewhere. And in another, not to put words in your mouth, but in Connecticut, they went through a process of, these are the rules, and then all the cities came up with, well, we'll make our own rules and a few more, and stopped it. So that's why Connecticut came back and said, okay, buy rights anywhere in the state. Sorry, local planning commission, and mayors, and town councils. So, you know, I don't know how many of these units we would have in five years or 10 years, but you're probably talking 50? With a streamlined permit processor or something like that. But you're not talking about, you know, doubling the population.
It seems to me that we should address the affordable housing nationwide crisis by saying, just kind of what you were saying, Bob, what are the parameters of Lewis? I mean, that's just the obvious statement. So, and having help from people like Karen and her organization, look at every single thing that is available. You know, the, the accessory units, tax credits, like all the things, and just literally have a grid to say, yes, we have room, or no, that just doesn't apply for us. You know, we're not going to have a, a sea colony, we're not going to have those things. So though, those are great for other areas. So then we could just narrow in on, which I think we need to, or it gets so depressing, actually. Narrowing on, what is our contribution to solving the Delaware problem? That's what I would like us to do. I don't want us to spin our wheels on things that just aren't going to happen. And then, that's what we communicate to the developers, and then maybe there's some financial incentives for that. That's what we communicate to the developers, particularly, developers particularly with this amount of senior population. Now, I'm over 65, I'm in that group. I mean, you need to design buildings differently, too. And so, all those factors we could bring in, and we address what we can, to feel successful in that. But we're going to be a drop in the bucket. But if everybody does it, you know, we can start to address it. So I like your presentation, because it seems plausible for us. And so, I think that's what we should do, and get working on those things that could move it sooner. For example, kitchens. If, if it takes three years to promulgate an ordinance, when people could already add kitchens, not short-term rentals, I used to run a bed and breakfast, I get that whole stuff. But if you could put a kitchen in that little barn or cottage, sooner than later, you could start addressing the problem before we write comprehensive ordinances. You know, in other words, prioritize what we can do, and prioritize the ones that have the biggest impact soonest.
And in, in some cases, we know that there are garages or units that have much of the facility, and not all. So they, they may be lacking a shower, or a bathtub, but they have a toilet and a sink.
Exactly. And then maybe
Do you think the city has a good handle on that current situation, or like current parameters that it is directing at?
Possibly, we'd have to look. Because while the code says you're not supposed to have a toilet in the kitchen, we have historically allowed, sorry, a toilet and a sink. Historically, we've allowed a toilet and a sink. So I think most everybody who's putting in a garage is putting in a toilet and a sink. And we've had
It's difficult to ascertain how many underground ADUs are out there. We need
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to
Not basement, by that as a
Yeah.
Because you're underwater.
I get the question on a weekly basis about if they, somebody can have an accessory dwelling unit for a family, or for, you know, long-term rentals.
And let me just add that, I think we should be looking at, or town council should be looking at, where the planning commission can look at the ordinance parameters in parallel. The council perhaps could look at the financial incentives to the homeowners willing to do this, which might also get us a fast inventory of people that, that might consider this. Because, and I don't think it has to be dramatic, but you want to reward the behavior that addresses affordable housing, in some way financially.
And, so I go ahead, Jen.
Hey, you go. I'm just executive.
I was going to say, you know, I think the direction we're looking at moving, as a planning commission, is to form a subcommittee that would look at this in more detail. And I know that council is already looking at Donovan's, and, you know, you have other, other things you might be, be looking at. But certainly, it would appear that the ADUs are probably the lowest-hanging fruit, or the, you know, quickest win here, in terms of providing some additional units. But we need to look at it in more detail. The, the good news here is, across the country, there are tons of communities that have gone through this, and that have, they have lessons learned from mistakes they made and successes they had, that we can draw upon.
I would like to ask a question at the appropriate time, so once you're finished.
It's now.
Oh, it is now. What I would like to ask you, Karen, is, how do, you know, this idea of the ADU is being promoted with the idea that the units would be made available for the folks who work at BV, for example, you know, or the teachers, and so forth. That, that sounds like discrimination to me, and it also is contrary to what most Americans practice by capital, being capitalist, and that is what the market drives. If the market, if your unit is worth $1,500 a month, why would you rent it for $300, or $750? And how, can you cite any examples where locales have been able to, to incentivize ADUs, and also control to whom the units are rented?
I do know with the ADUs, it, you're, you're right, that, you know, it's what the market will bear. The idea is that each additional unit is helpful, and that it will help mitigate, you know, talking in that free market context, that
Supply and
supply, demand, that the more units that are available, the more that, hopefully, that rent will come down. Also, by the fact that it is a, the cost associated with creating it is not as much as building a brand-new home, and it's a smaller unit. You know, so there's building expenses that are in proportion to those construction costs. So that is a, by nature, should be a more affordable product, not always, like particularly challenges in a high-market area. Now, we're talking about financial incentives. You could, what we have done at the housing authority is units that are created that address certain income ranges. We can be quite generous in our income, in our financial incentives, but they have to guarantee that it's going to go, for at least a certain amount of time, to a targeted income range that we're trying to hit.
And those incentives available to individual homeowners, do they have any ADUs? Or is that for a developer who builds 50 units and, you know, and dedicates them to a particular income?
Right now, we are using it, it's called the Strong Neighborhood Housing Fund. So they're more smaller-scale developments, and they're taking like three or four blighted homes at a time, and they're redeveloping them, and selling them to essentially a first-time home buyer. But if they go in certain areas, or they say they're going to address some more even affordable, then they get more money. You know, so, and that's also some of the ways that financial incentives are being structured for ADUs. And perhaps that's where partnerships can be developed, you know, to help bring those stronger incentives for those. So you're right that, you know, some of those units are going to be in the free market, you know, but just by their mere existence, that's going to help, it's supply and demand, you know. But then there are ways that financial incentives, because when you think about it, say you have $50,000 that are helping everything with that unit, that essentially, if it were not for that, that unit is there. You know, I think there should be some kind of income restriction, at least that matches, you know. should be some kind of income restriction, at least that matches, you know, that public, because that's public assistance.
And I want to be clear, I don't think we've been talking about it would be restricted to a particular, employees of a particular workplace. It would be an income restriction on these, not, like, it wouldn't be you have to work at BB in order to rent one.
I understand, but I, that introduces an element that I had not considered. I thought that we were trying to create more living units within the city. And what you've, I think what you've just suggested is that it would be permitted only if you made-
I'm not, I'm not making, I'm not making a suggestion in any direction there. I'm just saying what, what, I just wanted to correct that even in these situations where there are controls on it, it's a control by rent, sorry, by income, not by employer. That was the only thing I was making point on.
Okay.
And certainly, I mean, because some of these might be for a mother or an elderly, an elderly relative, or it might be a caregiver for, for the people who are living in the house that they want to rent to. It's a free one.
We, I think we should also, in addition to the, you know, I would just look at it as like a grid of which things work. Then I think we should have a, like a really creative session where it says, okay, Sussex County developers, not, not just City of Lewis, Sussex County developers, like farm credits, okay, just like farms are losing credits in different ways.
Yeah.
What if we said, in cooperation with Sussex Planning Commission, so the developer needs to put in 15 units, but it just doesn't work financially, but it would for 12, okay? Could that developer go into a tax credit bank, in a sense, sell those units to the City of Lewis, City of Lewis buys those, and that creates this kind of creative housing authority for individuals, so individuals buy into the Lewis program? In other words, so I just thought I want to do it, why should I have to come up with my own lease and my own materials? Like, there might be ways to have a cooperative, I hate to use the word HOA, but an HOA in a sense, of those individuals in Lewis who are willing to do this, and the developers get a little benefit in the county, but we get some funding to be able to do the financial incentives. I mean, I just, I mean, who knows? But the fact is, we know it's done for land use for farmers, and it's done all over the nation. So let's figure out a way to incentivize the developers to do it somewhere in Sussex, and how do we benefit? So I think, I think we have to do those kinds of things, too.
I think there are a lot of creative things we could work on. There's set-asides, there are all these different, different issues. I doubt that we'll solve them tonight, as extensive and useful as this presentation has been. And that's where my suggestion is that we form a subcommittee. And if the planning commission is in agreement with that, that we appoint three people to it to get things started and to begin the work, to look at what the scope of it would look at, what are the next steps, et cetera. Are we, I'm seeing nods here. Can I turn to Commissioners Moser and Matty and see if you're in agreement or have any comments on that suggestion?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I actually just raised my hand. I would like to know, we do have the mayor in the room and, and our city council members are, do we have, and I haven't heard it tonight, and maybe I missed it at prior meetings when I wasn't on the Lewis Planning Commission, but do we have some direction or instruction from mayor and city council as to the scope of this work and our involvement and our engagement in it? Are we thinking about this as a precursor to our work on the comp plan? I mean, I, I think having a sense of what the scope of it is would be helpful.
As Nancy said, you know, I think it's been identified in both our comp plan and in 2022 strategic plan. And as also discussed, I think this is, of all the efforts, one of the few that is probably achievable in Lewis. You know, given that we've underway with the, as Tom mentioned, on the Dutchman's Harvest piece, so I don't think there's any, frankly, open land. Now, the other thing to the point Amy was sort of making there is that, the other thing our comp plan does call for is the cooperation with the county in meeting those needs. So what degree, one, we can cooperate with the county, other municipalities, maybe form some kind of a joint venture along the lines that you, we can be creative, but I think, you know, our needs are limited. So in going after this, I think Nancy framed it well, which is to look at it further. From my perspective, and if you're asking us to go away with a charge, maybe that's what we do, but I think, yeah, the, where would be applicable, the appropriateness of zones, you know, maybe get some legal opinions on Tim's points around how restrictive we can be if you're going to allow rentals, you know. How do you control that? If the intention is to create affordable housing, you know, I think that's the goal here. If that's the goal, then how can we do that legally?
And, and I should say, I think it's a good point you raise, Commissioner Matty, and this is one thing that has come very directly out of the comprehensive plan, both the original comprehensive plan and our updated version of it. So it's incumbent on us as a planning commission to take the items that we have in that plan and actually take action on them and bring them into, into reality so that they're not just a vision of what we like, they're not just an ambition, but we actually make, make progress on them. In addition, as, as our mayor has stated, this year and the, and the prior year, when city council went through identifying priority issues, this was on the list of priority issues.
No, I appreciate that, Madam Chair. I will say, I did, you know, revisit our, our comp plan before this evening's meeting so that I could sort of refresh my recollection. And the provisions on affordable housing are fairly, I'll just use the word maybe bland. They're not, and I mean that with all due respect and kindness. And I'm just suggesting that there's not a lot of direction, or, or it's, it's a pretty broad, really, really broad. And we all know the comp plan has to be broad. But I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is there an intention, perhaps, that as we move towards the next comp plan, are we looking to sort of take some of that broad, vague language and, and maybe add some more scope and detail to it?
I think without a doubt, the intention is as we move forward to be able to get to more specifics on, on all of this. And certainly, when we went through the comp plan, I mean, you could see when we held the public workshop, people weren't too sure or that aware of how some of these things would work, just quite frankly, in the same way that I think we as planning commissioners weren't completely sure of that. And so, you know, part of the purpose of a subcommittee is to do that hard work, to, you know, roll their sleeves up, find out what, what lessons we can learn from other jurisdictions, and really get down into the details in a way that we haven't been able to yet. So I, I absolutely agree with you in terms of the way you've characterized the comprehensive plan. Yeah, part of that is the nature of it, but there are also topics in it where probably we had not educated ourselves on them to the same degree as we have with some other topics. And this, this would be one of them, I would say.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Sorry, I heard the voice from a far, somehow sounded like it was coming from the left side of the room. I've now oriented.
I, I am a little concerned that the commission members are already sitting on several subcommittees or other boards. And I would, I would really propose for, for this particular topic that perhaps we convene a work session where all of us attend and come up with whatever it is we want to propose jointly and, and perhaps more expeditiously.
It's an interesting proposal. I guess my one concern is, as you've stated, right now, we're down two members. So we have fewer members than we normally have to distribute across these committees. I have spoken to three members of the commission who are willing to serve on this. And I would just suggest that they pull together enough information to have a useful work session with the full commission. I think this is the kind of topic, though, that probably we want to get broader participation from everyone on the commission as opposed to having a small group that, you know, may, may, may spend too long getting really deep into things without bouncing the ideas off the rest of the commissioners.
Don't, don't we have a meeting of our study group coming up, March? Didn't we schedule a meeting somewhere in there?
Yeah, I think that's probably the last meeting of that.
Yeah, but we've got a date. We can invite everybody to be confused.
Well, I guess, here's the question I put to you. Would you like to all get together when we haven't identified what other jurisdictions are doing, when we haven't really done the research on it? I'm not sure what we would all talk about.
I think we could, we could talk about what we know as, as city residents, what we know exists. To me, one of the things that was an eye-opener here was this simple, I never, I don't think about the internal ADUs as being ADUs. But I know a number of them that exist in the City of Lewis. I know people who have worked, who work in local restaurants who have lived in them. And I don't know if these are licensed through the City of Lewis. And, you know, I think it's a very-
I think we probably know the answer to that.
The mayor is holding it here.
But the other thing, I think there are a lot of possibilities with this that, I've been sitting here going through my mind, you know, like you think about the, the homestay in Pilot Town, where you can't imagine that you could put something like this in. But, well, a lot of those houses have unfinished lofts and, and things that exist and possibilities that maybe we aren't really thinking of coming out of the gate. It's not, the ADU that I was thinking about was that detached ADU. And I think I would be very much in favor of Melanie's suggestion and Bob's suggestion of just joining the group and doing some brainstorming. We all live here, we know what's out there.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy for us to do that. That does mean additional meetings, so.
What about, what about-
I'm looking around-
I prefer meetings over homework.
Just to make sure that, that we are knowingly signing up for this.
Can I, can I just, what about a kind of a compromise, or maybe it's closer to the chair's recommendation? Not a committee, because we are all getting overstretched, and we do need those new members appointed for the environmental and this. Okay. Why not just a task force with one meeting only of a subset, three people, who would write a scope, and then we go to work session?
Okay.
Okay, so not, you're not committing. I mean, I can commit, commit to a task force, I can't commit to another committee. But a task force that has one meeting for 90 minutes that's facilitated, let's get something down on paper. I think it will make our work session, with all the benefits we have as residents, more productive if we have something as a starting. And it would just be the scope and parameters, these are the things we could look at. And it doesn't limit anybody's brainstorm or ideas, but it gets it moving.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm-
Jackie, do you have your hand up? Okay, back, back over to you, sorry.
No, no, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. I, I think that's actually an excellent proposal. I also would agree that, and I don't mean to be selfish about this, that we're all stretched pretty thin. If we don't have, you know, zoning packets and, and materials that, that need to come before us, maybe instead of adding additional meetings, this can be part of our monthly meetings, a, a chunk of it. And if we don't have anything that has to come before us for review and consideration, we can use our monthly meeting to discuss these issues.
I think we are coming off of a, a little vacation here from, from applications. But I know there are applications coming. So I expect our next meeting is going to be a fairly long meeting. So we would not be able, I doubt we would be able to do it at the next meeting. It would probably have to be after that. However, that would give us time to have a small group get together and follow your suggestion, Amy, of putting together a scope, et cetera. Now, I should say that there, I'm hearing two different suggestions here, and I, I want to kind of pull these out a little bit more. Originally, when we were looking at this, and Bob and I have been involved in some meetings with Karen, Janelle, and other experts on the situation, in terms of scoping, we were initially planning to focus on ADUs. The range of creative things we could do with Sussex County, with other jurisdictions, with financing, potential financing partners, I think there are a great many of those. But I also believe they will take more time and require a lot more research than we've done yet. So, I'm, you know, I, I'm trying to respond to the commission here in terms of a broad brainstorming session that would cover a lot of different areas, or a focused committee initially to shoo on ADUs and then move on to other topics. And I'm looking for feedback from, from the commissioners.
I would like to, to jump in on, I think tackling the ADUs is prudent, because there are a lot of roadblocks that have already been removed. For example, the feedback from the community was concern over ADUs being concerted, converted into STRs at some point. And with the new regulations that we have, it would be really simple to just say, these units can never apply for an STR license. So that's simple. We didn't have that last year. So that's one. And then some of the zoning things, and Janelle will help on this, but, you know, in the set-aside garage or what other type of detached ADU, presently, it's just a zoning reg that prohibits, it's, it's that you can't have a sink and a toilet, or what is, what is, I know that you can't have a kitchen and a bathroom, but there's very specific language on this. This is something that if changed, could-
Does it also make sure height of the garage increases?
Yeah, 24 feet is the maximum height for an accessory structure. So shed, garage, accessory structures, maximum height is one and a half stories, 24 feet, which you could definitely do, you know, a, a studio apartment in, in a garage. Right now, the code says, the, the code contradicts itself and says, one says no bathroom, no sink, the other says bathroom and sink. So I was, yes, I've been trying to fix-
This is why I don't understand it, then.
Yeah, I've been, I've been trying to fix that.
And no bet.
But I was, but it's-
Do we want people to wash their hands or not?
No.
Well, it's, you can't have both. Like, one says you can have both, and one says you can't have them. So, but if, if you're thinking about going to the ADUs, that section of the code would get fixed as part of that, because we would, we would then recognize bathing facilities and a kitchen, because right now you cannot do any of that in an accessory structure.
Right. So-
And, and we did pull together a short list of the most glaring things in the code that one might want to look at, that would facilitate ADUs.
So it seems to me that the easy way would be to address ADUs and then move on to bigger ideas, which were really great ideas, Amy.
Yeah. But, um- There's a list of-
It seems that this is a matter of all tasks.
That could be looked at as well.
I would say that, yeah, as you put it, guys, basement, well, obviously, there's obviously the windows.
Yeah, you'd need, you need access to get out or steps to get down if it's an attic.
Egress, ingress, right.
Yeah. So you'd have to meet fire code. I think something we, we'd want to make sure is, typically, you're not going to want to require fire suppression in accessory dwelling units. So, because that would be cost, that could become cost prohibitive, something we'd want to look at. But there, the list of, that I combined was, you know, looking at, you know, the missing middle, the triplexes, the quads, you know, the separation between, you know, duplexes, lots of different things for holistically looking at, at affordable housing items. But I know ADU seems to, as the chair has said, is kind of low-hanging and seems, seems something that could be done- something that could be done, and I know they do exist in the city, some legally, some not, and that's just the way it is.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry for asking. But do you see sort of a path where we could grandfather and sort of bring those up and use that as sort of a pilot to see how then bring them out of the work, sort of, to speak?
Absolutely, yes.
Hey, Rich, did you have...
Yeah, just sort of an overall comment. First of all, I totally strongly second the idea of a task force to kind of get our handle on this and doing ADUs first as kind of low-hanging fruit, and then getting the larger, you know, the Planning Commission together to do the larger look, you know, at other options. And one of the reasons, and I agree with Jackie's assessment of sort of, you know, bland, you know, looking at the, at the comp plan, but this is where, and Tim and I had a discussion a few weeks back, that the Planning Commission itself needs to, and it's just my view now, really look at how we can be of assistance to the, to the city council, and be more visionary, and look at what are the shortcomings of the, of the comp plan, areas where it may be somewhat lacking, but there is something to hang it on, and say, okay, city council, this is where we think as a city, as a planning commission, we need to move forward as a vision for our community to accomplish the things that have, that have given it the character, that make it the place that we want and to live and need to pick up our game, and one of them is affordable housing. I think this is a very important aspect of what, what our community needs to be going for. There are equity issues here, there are all kinds of important issues embedded in this topic. So I just think that it's an important one, and I would think that our chair is the right idea. Eventually, when we're fully up to speed here to get a committee that can look at this in great detail. The other thing I would just say, Karen's done a lot of the work for us here on page eight or whatever, 14.
14.
Recommendations, and that we don't get too far into the, it says simplify building permitting process. I can see where we could really not heed that very easily. So just to, and then discourage a lot. So just looking at these that are already done here and try to adhere to them. Anyway, that's fine.
We should never compromise on complexity. Okay, so I'm going to pull this discussion to an end unless there are other comments. I think we have consensus that we will pull two or three people together to come with a scoping, and I would suggest that Bob, myself, and one other person do that. And do I have volunteers for the one other person? And this would be to do the scoping.
I would volunteer for that.
Good, done. Okay, we're going to move on now to reports. Although I should say again, a big thank you to Karen, because you've really helped get our juices flowing in terms of ideas here, so we appreciate it.
I'm, I was, it's, the pleasure's not mine. I was just saying to Janelle that my heart is so heartened and that I think this is awesome, and that I am happy to help any way I can.
We do have your name, phone number, and email.
Sorry.
She knows me.
Yes, yes.
We'll move on to reports. I'll move, let's go through these in the order in the agenda here, and we'll go to Commissioner Moser, who I think has some good news for us on what's happened with the annexation ordinance.
Yes, at the last, or a city council meeting, there was a proposal from Councilperson Rizert to defer the vote on the annexation regs based on some of the issues that he was raising. And so we actually did a walk around town together, and I believe that we have three issues that we would like to have as amendments to the annex regs. The first being dimensions on driveways and/or parking pads, that widths be limited to 10 feet for a single and 20 feet for double, basically, and also that, that they are not to exceed the width of a garage. The second item would be that porches be set back at least 10 feet from a right-of-way. So we are, while we are encouraging porches, we do want a little bit of breathing space between the sidewalk and the porch. And then the third item really has to do with alleys, and we don't have these resolved yet because we are still waiting for some dimensional requirements on car turning radius. But we've seen an alley that had a pavement of 14 feet, 14 and a half feet, and it seems to work adequately, and perhaps we can reduce right-of-ways for alleys as well as paving widths based on some of what we've seen. But again, we need this turning radius to be brought forward so that we can make a determination on that. And that's my report.
Fantastic. And city council, though, did vote on the AX, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
They voted and approved exactly what we approved.
Right.
On the basis of we voted six to zero, and then, because Councilperson Rizert is, reads and draws, draws careful, he suggested these changes, so...
So I suggest that we put this on our agenda for our next meeting. We need to have it stated on the agenda before we actually go through a discussion and vote on it.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, but I believe that it's an amendment at the council level. I don't, I don't believe it needs to come back to the Planning Commission.
Oh, I have...
No. So what happened was, that was the suggestion made, the amendment was not accepted at the table, so there was a follow-up motion that was made to refer it back to, to the commission.
I stand corrected, thank you.
Okay, so city council has looked at these amendments and did not approve them, is that what you're saying?
They sent them back to the Planning Commission for your consideration.
Okay.
So they'll be on next month's agenda for your discussion.
So that's why, this is why I'm saying I think they should be on our next month's agenda, and we can have a presentation and discussion on this.
Yep.
I would like to add that I watched it, and I still was unclear, so...
And I owe some of that.
No, no, it was, so, to clarify, it was passed, but we're going to add amendments, and that's what we're looking at, right?
Right, what happened, Deborah, was...
Okay, that's what I thought.
And I should say, anything that's passed by city council, if we find there's, if they find there's an issue, or we think there's an issue that needs to be clarified or modified, we can always go back to city council with a recommendation to amend what's been passed. And so this would be in that format, where we'd say, okay, we have some more thoughts on this, let's discuss it, we can take it forward, and we would vote to either make that recommendation to city council or not to, or maybe, you know, I don't know, we could come up and say it should be nine feet, not 10 feet or 11 feet, yeah. Good.
But we are pretty sure it doesn't need to go back before a...
Does not require public hearing.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so we'll put it on the agenda for our next meeting. Environmental Subcommittee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had our first meeting, and we have committed, and we'll have this ready for all of us for next month, a vision and scope document, and that's going to have what we will cover and what we will not cover. And I think what we will not cover is just as important as what we will cover. So what we will cover, we'll focus in on, at this point, the ordinances that exist. We're looking for gaps, emissions, additions. What will not be covered will be things that are either out of our jurisdiction, like noise pollution, because it's handled in other places in the code, or something that this Planning Commission or the Town Council has just addressed. So let's use the tree commission as an example. I normally, if that didn't exist, I would have put this under us to, like, look at, but why? We have a great commission that's already moving through the process. So I just want the public particularly, and the new members of that subcommittee, to understand, it's not that we're excluding, it's just that things are in other places for good reasons. So that's the scope part. We also are going to recognize past work, and I sensed a frustration that there have been other committees with other, and public groups that have brought the science forward. I don't want to reinvent the wheel, we're going to be looking at past, meaning recent, though, because science and engineering are changing in the environmental field, but recent things like the resiliency study that was done in May, that has a lot of good information. We need to go back to that, as well as water workshops that Bob's familiar with. So scope is going to be nailed down, and so then you can all, you know, review that. The subcommittee will also have organization principles. These will follow the code of ethics that Lewis already has, but I want to create, as much as possible from the beginning, a collaborative environment for the public as well as the commission, so it's civil discourse and different points of views, but I want as chair to be able to stop the unruly yelling that's done in public hearings. So I want to set it out from the very beginning that that's not tolerated. Sad that we have to do that nationwide, but I think we do these days. So there'll be some organizing principles that everyone who joins has got to buy into, or they really shouldn't be part of this committee, because we're not going to operate in the other ways. We're looking at four commissioners, so glad I was heard about, we need another commissioner. I would recommend that this Planning Commission, that whoever joins, either picks affordable housing or environment, but we need something new, we need some new energy, okay? So I want to have it, four commissioners and three citizens, and Bob has taken the lead to identify some candidates for those individuals. We want some representation from obviously geographic regions of the city and be as diverse as possible. They will be, quote, "voting members," so that they're committed, but with the full understanding that we're just voting in a subcommittee on recommendations, they're not final decision makers. That's the Planning Commission and the Mayor and Town Council, so I want that clear, that's often very confusing to city, to citizens. I also, we also talked about, we want the committee to have rolling recommendations. So what I don't want to do is chair a study that 18 months from now has had a lot of hard work that the Planning Commission rejects and the Mayor and Town Council reject, that's just a silly waste of energy. So we're going to take a few topics to start with. Impervious, impervious materials are probably high on our list, I think, we've already been briefed. And we're going to look at probably, the ones that are teeing up already are dark sky lighting, impervious, pervious materials, electric vehicles, and lot size, because those impact a lot of everything else we would discuss. And so if we, let's take impervious, pervious first.
Excuse me, but you were really meaning lot coverage?
Lot coverage, yes, I'm sorry, not lot size, thanks for that clarification, coverage, which connects somewhat to impervious, pervious, too. Thank you for the clarification. So we're going to want to look at those and, you know, divide our efforts to get those moving forward into all of the processes of public input and hearings. The other thing, the last thing is the communication with all of you and Mayor and Town Council. Once you all, as my colleagues, have blessed whatever our subcommittee has come up with for scope, then I do want to get on the Town Council agenda periodically so that we are supported, in no way implying derailment, but I just know that their elected officials have a different perspective, as they should, the voice of those things, and I want to make sure before the subcommittee goes on to things, doesn't mean that the Mayor and Town Council are saying they're approving, it's just that they're saying, yes, that scope makes sense to us. You might come up, and you're, and I'm briefing you throughout the process, so...
Right, so I think Melanie did a good job of that with the annexation committees, I recall, was kind of keeping us up to speed on where you were with the committee and getting feedback, or continue to study and where not, I think it's, it's...
Yes, it's very, very helpful.
Okay, and Janelle can obviously be the liaison, when we're at a point where we have something we want to, like, share.
Right.
And then the last thing, I was so pleased by our city engineer, because he came forward at our first public meeting, and...
Really?
You did. And we've drafted a scope that Janelle's looking at for an intern that's in their offices. They have one right now who is a grad student with an interest in environment or a focus on environment, because we need to find a lot of model ordinances, and that would be like a perfect task. So we've drafted a scope for that individual, and I understand that there is some funding still left, depending how much that person can do in six weeks. I don't know what else she's tasked to do, but that's between, you know, you guys let me know how that works out.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
Yeah, we got a, intern doesn't start until April.
Doesn't start till April?
Yeah.
Bummer.
That intern.
That intern.
That intern, okay, so you can find us something else, yeah, okay. And then we will need attorney review of the documents, because I'm writing language from a prior life, which may or may not fit into Delaware or Lewis, and so before any of our documents are public, I'd really appreciate a review critique, and I would imagine a massive edit of what I've said, appreciating the First Amendment right to speech, but also... Okay, so we'll have more for you next month.
Fantastic.
So when is your next meeting? Do you have an actual schedule?
March 6. March 6.
And I should say, we want to have all of our committees, and I know the tree committee has been going to Mayor and City Council to give updates, we want to make sure that's happening with all of them, and not just to confirm scope, but to also share some of the tidbits of knowledge and information and facts that you've been uncovering. You mentioned the resiliency. I would also say, check in with Charlie on, when we did the subdivision code, we spent a lot of time on lighting and the impacts of lighting, and I can't remember the name of the lighting commission that we got detailed information from, but it would be...
Yeah, Tom Reston did a lot of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, he did.
I have a lot of those saved, too, a lot of those links.
That's great, just send any of those forward, it'd be terrific. Yeah, that'd be terrific, and I have a direct experience in implementing a dark sky program in a city that I used to be the vice mayor of, and Bob's looking for other speakers and stuff, too, so...
Perfect.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Onto tree committee.
Well, I just wanted to second and say thank you, Amy, because I think the goal that we all have on these subcommittees is being in touch with Mayor and Council throughout the process, because we don't want subcommittees where people are wasting their time serving, because you know what the outcome will be, they won't serve anymore. And so it's, it's great that that's becoming our culture. The tree subcommittee, we had our public workshop on January 19th. I'm going to be pushing for the facts from Janelle here. Do, do, and if you don't have this stuff, sorry to put you on the hot spot, but do we have the head count for how many people attended, roughly?
It was roughly 60 people.
Okay, and we had, really, it was great feedback, we had great supportive feedback. And I was, so we have our comments, I now, I had suggested that we keep them open for 30 days, and I regret doing that because I'd like to get started, but we have the comments, just to remind everyone, on the city website, still open till February 19th, and then we are going to be having, due to travel schedules of many people on the committee, subcommittee, we're having our next meeting March 16th now at 4:00 p.m. All are invited, but at that meeting, we're going to be looking at the comments, seeing what's come in. Can you say, have a lot of, a lot more comments come in?
We've definitely got a number of comments that have come in, but if they're doing, like, all of the sections, so I'll get, like, a block of, like, four emails, so it's just one person doing... one person doing that, so.
And that'll be enough time for you to get all the information together for us?
Yes.
That was, you know, another reason I was thinking it was, even though I want to get started, better to hold off a little on having a meeting. And after that, I think where we're going to be is deciding, we had five topics that we focused on at the workshop, and, and the overarching goal of increasing the canopy, what, you know, what direction we want to go in, I'm going to assume writing a tree ordinance. And at that point, as we said along, we're going to need legal counsel support. And the other thing is other needs that we have from the city. I had expressed this before, that we really could use some administrative support, if there's any, or through the idea of an intern, I love that. And we can discuss that more, but.
That would be your budget request to mayor and council?
No, not, not a budget request, as much as like an intern, I, you know, would be fabulous.
They are paid interns, so it would, it's a budget.
Tried there. All right. Where are the days of working in politics for free? I did it.
They are long gone.
So, you know, we'll, we'll be moving forward to write it, and hopefully on all the topics that were presented. And I'd like to escalate the schedule a little bit of our meetings, which is something I've brought up to the subcommittee, and just start getting, getting something that we can present. I would imagine, for mayor and city council, would you like to hear what the feedback was? Would you like me to try to get on the next, it would have to be the April, because the April agenda to come and. Yeah, just, just to share what the feedback was from the workshop, and what direction we're, we're going to move in, because throughout the process, I want to make sure we're on track.
Sure. I don't know why.
Yeah, I guess it would be April. Because if we're, we're not getting that information until the March 16th meeting, yeah, would have to unfortunately be almost a month later, because you're the second Monday, right?
Well, you could, depending on what happens.
April workshop, right?
Or the March workshop, which would be the 23rd.
But exactly.
Oh, no, that would be fine.
Yeah, because you're going to go over it, and I'm guessing you're going to identify which priority you want to focus on at that meeting, and then.
Yes.
We could get you on to the March 23rd workshop.
Well, you know, unless we get.
Or 30th, I can never remember which date we're, if it's the last Thursday or not.
It says the 23rd on the workshop, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, all I'm going to be able, all I'm going to be doing is turning around the information that we get at the meeting on the 16th, so that's, that's not a problem at all.
Okay.
That would work. So it's March 23rd, and what, what time is that?
They start at 9:30.
Okay.
And they're typically held in chambers.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll double check the, the date, because I know it, next week it's the 23rd, because February's a weird, it's a short month.
The regular meeting is on 13th of March.
Correct.
And also just another, you know, kind of procedural thing, as we move forward, backing up the, the idea that, that we have now fully explored and determined that non-council members can vote on subcommittees. And we, you know, we're going to be bringing these topics up for vote in the, in our subcommittee more often. So that's, that's pretty much.
I, I have a question. When I was at the Rascal meeting, the Denrec members said there's a statewide grant for trees. I think it's like a $5,000 grant, but I didn't know if the city was applying.
The city, that goes through the Parks and Recreation manager, and she handles all of that through the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'm sorry, the Parks and Marina manager, sorry. And then the Parks and Recreation Commission goes after any tree planting funds or anything like that. So.
Can we follow up to find out if they're going after it, because?
They usually do. They're, they're usually after.
Okay.
After, as, you know, whatever grant funding they can get, they're, they go after.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd also like to add that just, trees are in the news. We had nice coverage in the Cape Gazette yesterday. There also was a story about the Association of Realtors planning what Commissioner Thompson refers to as whips, I believe, which are these trees, like, you know. But the realtors planted 150 trees, and then there have been cartoons. And Dewey is also looking at their tree ordinance now to make some changes. So I, more than ever, and this has all just happened since the, the workshop, it's time, it's time to do this. We've been talking about Lewis for a long time, and I, I want to get it done. I want to move forward.
Thank you, Deborah. And thank you for a very successful public workshop.
Thanks to all of you, and thanks to all the members of the, the subcommittee.
Okay, we'll move on to our city solicitor report, and I should introduce Alex Burns, because you, if you're looking over there thinking you're going to see Glenn, you're not.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have anything today.
Okay, great. But as you can see, we have lots of things for you, so. Okay, on to our liaisons. Mayor?
Well, as, as Melanie mentioned earlier, there was, we just voted on the annexation, and I voted against it because I thought we could make those amendments at the table, but, you know, nonetheless, it was passed, and so it, like you said, it may, may come back in front of you. There was also a joint site review committee of the Gibbs property, which is a, or across the street, sort of, of the old town of White's Pond. And so the plan there so far looks to be, to maintain the existing building that's there and add, what was it, about 15,000 square foot, that was additional structure, which would sit sort of at an angle to the existing building and front White's Pond there. And that would be a, a commercial development, and it called for about 117 market spaces, give or take.
Yeah.
And there seemed to be some discussion there of an agreement between a future residential property and Mr. Gibbs' property with respect to buffer adjustment. I think that was one of the requests. There were two waivers, one was for this residential, commercial buffer, which typically is 30 feet, and I think they were asking for 20, right? Reduction of 10?
Correct.
And then the other waiver had, that they're requesting has to do with, a building that size, I think, required three, and they were right, I think you made the point, they were right on the cusp, so they're asking for a waiver to just have two. And there also existed sort of a dirt road that's been serving as their loading area for years, so that's kind of where that property is. And I believe the next, there was a recommendation made that it should come before, with a public hearing, right? I think that's the next, that was there, that was the joint site reviews, public hearing now to come before.
Mayor council does schedule a public hearing, and then you guys get to have a, a fun public hearing.
And you know, one other thing that we've taken on on our own, frankly, and we didn't, we haven't sent, likely sent some of it to you all, for is the driveway. There's some driveway amendments that we're looking to make. One, we're trying to clear up urgently, so we didn't send it to you, is the stacked parking. And so right now, if you read our code carefully, you, it says that you actually can't stack parking, and you have to remove, can't remove one car without getting the other out, so. We know, just like ADUs, that these things exist, and to what extent we can clean, clean it up, and, because we're, we're not, we're not enforcing it, so we should clean it up out of our code. But there's other parts, too, that involve definitions of driveways and such, that we'll probably come back before you also. Good luck defining erosion-resistant.
We're always up for a challenge.
Yeah.
Tim, you had a good one. No, you did a fine job. I have nothing else to.
Richard, no? Okay. Then, Janelle?
The mayor took all my stuff. So, you know, thank you. There, there is another site plan going to the joint site in March, and there will also be potentially another one in April as well, so that committee's going to be busy for the next couple of months. So, yes.
Wow. And then over to, over to Mr. Owen. He could have.
Uh, no, I don't have anything to add. We're deep into our wastewater treatment plant.
Yes. The last item on the agenda are the minutes. Are there any edits, additions, changes?
Nope.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. I believe we have come to adjournment. So thank you all, and we will adjourn, adjourn the meeting now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Recording stopped.